We have Dr. Stich here to present to us this evening and have discussion as well, but it will be on our Board Progress Monitoring Report.
So, as Mr. Sti- Dr. Stich makes his way to the podium to present for the board, I just wanted to remind the board about the context by which he landed in our study session. So, we have had, or we had a conversation about the need for us as a board and superintendent team to have a deep discussion about how well the new Board Progress Monitoring Policy met the needs of the board. So you identified a new policy through your policy governance study, 1260, that outlined a set of Board Progress Monitoring Reports as a staff that we would institute present to you. We went through our full cycle last year during that process, so I was in front of you this fall asking for the opportunity then now to look at how well did that process work for you or not. And Dr. Stich simultaneously has been working with me kind of behind the scenes to visualize some data benchmarks and indicators around our outrageous outcomes. So we thought it would be great to have him come to help with both aspects of our work so that there could be some coordination between the two things. So, just by way of background, and I just want to thank John for his continued support for me as a superintendent as we've journeyed through this really complicated set of data visualizations and now layering on the implications for this policy work. So, thank you, John. I've appreciated your work and look forward to today's presentation.
Thank you. Do I just stand here or?
Um, behind the podium. You need to speak into the microphone.
Okay. I can do that.
Okay, thanks.
And then how do I control the PowerPoint once we get it up and running?
Um, my friend Mark Garrick is coming to help you.
Click mouse, arrow, anything.
We've got, um, we've got, I mean, you can vent it there.
Okay.
So, Dr. Stich, in the interest of transparency, several years ago, the board had microphones and video put so that we could stream our study sessions and our board sessions and then record them so that people could watch them in the future. Otherwise, we'd love for you to be able to travel the room or do whatever you want, but that's the reason for the podium.
Okay, thank you. That's what I figured, but.
Yeah.
So, thanks again for having me. And I want to start off just by kind of introducing myself so you know a little bit about my background. The name may sound familiar because my brother and sister-in-law both teach at Chihuahua. They've been longtime Pasco teachers, Jim and Misty Stich. So you're probably familiar with the last name. I grew up over on the other side of the river. I won't say which town. And after going to WSU, I got a chemical engineering degree, came back, ended up out on the Hanford site, and during that time was convinced by my wife to run for the Richland School Board. And I spent eight years on the board, and during that time really fell in love with education. So I went back to school during my second term, got my MBA with an emphasis in school finance and human resources. I stepped down off the board and about six months later, Rich Semler hired me into the Richland School District to run support services. Did that for a few years, eventually moved over to HR, went back to school again, got my doctorate in education, my superintendent credentials. When I left Richland, I was deputy superintendent. I spent several years as a superintendent of a 5,000-student school district down in the state of Oregon in Camby, and then jumped back over across the river in Washington, and I was in the Vancouver area in the Evergreen School District as deputy super- superintendent there of 26,000-student district. After leaving Evergreen, I landed with CEE, and I've been with this company for three years, and they brought me in to really revitalize and figure out how do we make our work even more relevant than it was beyond the surveys? How do we help support districts in not using the perceptual data and expanding upon the use of not just perceptual data but academic data? So my background with engineering, business, education, I think combines pretty well with being able to dig in and look at some of these analytical things. The other thing I just wanted to share is I do do some board governance work on the side, too. When I was in Evergreen, I implemented coherent governance. I know you didn't or aren't currently with coherent governance, but I've had experience with policy governance and coherent governance, and recently spoke at a conference specifically on monitoring of results and ends policies and how do you really get outcome-based monitoring for the board level? And that's some of the things that I baked into the presentation today that I want to walk you through and give you some food for thought before we dig in and give you the opportunity to give us feedback on what you see as the current strengths, weaknesses of the monitoring plan that you have and maybe some adjustments and changes that you want to be able to make. So with that, I'm going to start with a reference that some of you are going to find amusing and others are going to look at this and wonder what this is. This is Mr. Peabody and the Wayback Machine because I want to take you way back in time, and I want to talk a little bit about the evolution of public education in the United States. The public education was formally formed in 1647 in the state of Massachusetts, a pretty simple law that just said if you have so many families in a town, you have to have a school. And that's really all it said. You have to have a school. It didn't say who governed it, who, how you operated the school, complete local control of the school systems. And we churned along like that for a long time. In 1721, finally in Boston, we actually had the first school board. So Boston said, "Our school system has gotten big enough that just expecting the community to govern this isn't really working. We need a formal board that's going to run the school district on a regular basis." And that worked pretty well for most districts for, again, several years until school districts continued to grow and evolve and become more complex. And the board members got to the point of saying, "You know, this is more than we want to do on a daily basis because we're hiring, we're firing, we're deciding on books, we're doing all types of things." So they hired, finally hired a superintendent 109 years later after the first school board was formed. So they had 109 years of self-governing and making all those decisions. And even when we did hire a superintendent, it was really just for the instructional part, and the board retained a lot of authority over what was happening in the district. As we've gotten into the 1900s and now the 2000s, things are even more complex than they ever were before, and you, as board members, understand you don't want to be involved in every single daily decision in a school district. You want to be able to delegate things. But where this comes in and becomes a little bit tricky is how do you decide where to draw the line between your authority and the superintendent's authority and your responsibilities and the superintendent's responsibilities? And some of the work I've done in smaller districts is really pointing out that often that's how they draw the line. It really is blended between the board does what the board wants to do, and oftentimes it isn't even really that well-defined what the board wants to do. A situation arises and the board says, "We want to take this on," and the superintendent says, "Fine, go ahead." So, looking at your documents gives me a good indication that Pasco has done some work and you have pretty well-defined where you're going to draw that line. And this is where most of your governance models will talk about you really want to draw the line to where the board truly is governing the district, and it's a shared leadership role. But when it comes to the strategy, the implementation, and the management, that really is delegated to the superintendent on a daily basis. But the board still, through governance, has to ensure that the way that the superintendent and the administration is running the district meets your expectations and your desires and the public's desires for the school system. So how do we build in something that ensures that you get the results that you want out of the school system? Well, you've done some of that work already, and as Superintendent Whitney pointed out at the beginning, you went through a year of monitoring reports. You defined, "These are the things that we want to monitor. Here's some of the data that we want to take a look at, and we want you to bring these reports." And I spent some time in the last few weeks digging through all the reports that were brought to you during the last year and looking at some of the things. And to be honest with you, you're way ahead of where most districts are with this. Many districts I work with are starting from scratch and would be envious of the point that you're at. Not to say that it can't be better and can't be improved, but it's a good, solid foundation to begin with. The other thing before we start digging into the monitoring that I want to bring up is the balance between responsibility and accountability. When we talk about how to draw that line, one of the things that I had to have a lot of discussions with my board when we implemented coherent governance was the fact that if they wanted to retain the responsibility for a decision, they had to be accountable for the decision, too, because it wasn't fair for them to say, "We want to make a decision and we're going to hold you accountable for the outcomes." And to give you an example, and one of the best nuances of conversations we had is they wanted to be responsible for elementary boundary decisions. We were going to build a new elementary school, and they wanted to do that. And I said, "Well, you realize transportation budget is highly influenced by the way you draw elementary boundaries. So if you're going to be responsible for the decision for elementary boundary drawing, you have to have some accountability for the budget in transportation as well." And there are some things that go along with that. And it was a healthy discussion, and we came to an agreement, and they still said they're going to make the decision. I said, "Great. I don't think it's going to be a problem, but if it is, no, I'm going to put an asterisk next to the budget and bring it back to you and say, 'Here's the differential cost because of the way you drew the boundaries that I'm not really responsible for. You chose to spend the budget that way.'" Does that make sense? I think it's a good example to keep in mind when you're thinking about responsibility and accountability have to go hand in hand. So when I talk about what makes good outcome or results monitoring, I looked at five checkpoints that I wanted to walk through with people and think about how you think about what you're trying to accomplish. And first of all, it really is what are you trying to accomplish? Have you defined what you're doing as a district? Is it an outcome is the next one, which is really critical, because if you're monitoring process, you might feel really good about checking off a list of things that you did, but is it really moving the needle for kids and is it making an impact on the education of students within your system? What does it look like when it occurs? Really what you're trying to do is mathematically model a system, and you want to make sure that what you're describing to begin with with words makes sense before you go out and try to model what that's going to be. Then what can be controlled? And this is, this is one of those areas that I think many districts don't take into account well enough, and it's because we've had limitations on what we can do with data historically, and I think now we have the ability to do much more with data than we ever could, to where we can take into some of those factors on what can be controlled. The example I give you is if you have a student who comes in as a junior with two credits, is the Pasco School District responsible for them not graduating in four years? You really can't control that. Getting them a diploma, yes, that's something you need to work towards, but the fact that can you get them across a stage in four years when they come in extremely credit deficient and they weren't even in your system? It's beyond your control. So what can you control, and then how do you measure what you can control? And that kind of goes back into how do we describe what it looks like when it does occur? And the last thing, is it really going to drive change? So it's looping back to the beginning of what are you trying to accomplish, and is the end result going to be a better system that supports student learning and supports student growth on a daily basis and the outcomes that we want for kids? As I was looking through your data, another thing I wanted to, I liked was this quote that was in one of the presentations from last year, because schools are an extremely complex system. And, you know, for every complex problem, there's an answer that's clear, simple, and wrong. And when I look at how, you know, you go Google Pasco School District online and you see some web pa- or how good are Pasco schools? And you'll see several different organizations that try to rate schools that are going to give you a single-letter grade for a school. And that, to me, doesn't describe a school any more than one single-letter grade can describe a student at the end of the year. You really need to have a composite of data that really tells a story about what's happening within the system. And I appreciated the fact that the Pasco administration shared this with you earlier because that's a lot of what I'm going to be sharing today, is it's going to be a lot of things I think you're going to have to put at play, and it's not going to be a simple yes or no answer. So it's hard to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down on the overall system. There may be individual components that you can look at, but overall, we need to look at multiple measures when we're looking at accountability. Next, from what we're trying to accomplish, you've done a good job of outlining the five outrageous outcomes. And I do a lot of strategic planning processes with school districts, and the things that I looked at here the first time I looked at these, and I know, I think you only had four originally and you added number five after some time, I think these are solid. These are good outcomes that hit the span of what you would expect your kids to have. So when, you know, I'm just giving you my independent view is these are pretty good outcomes, and they are outcomes. You're not focusing on process, which many school districts tend to fall into. When we think about what we're trying to accomplish as well, I use this theory of action out of University of Washington, and we really want to make sure it centers on kids. The end result is understanding what's going on with learning, and then how are you going to change adult behavior that eventually is going to improve what's happening with your kids? And while Superintendent Whitney and the administration are responsible for all these adult actions that are going to happen in planning and strategizing and making sure they happen, the end result is you're looking at these student outcomes and trying to make sure that the student outcomes are what you want for your kids. Again, outcome versus process, just looking at the pure definition, and your outrageous outcomes are clearly outcomes. What does it look like when it occurs? This is one of the slides that you had, and you have three possible indicators. Either, yeah, it's definitely there, it's mostly there with some explanation, or it didn't meet our expectations. What I would look at, it's good to have these as that indication, but I think there's a lot more behind the story of third-grade reading than just a thumbs up or a thumbs down or a thumb sideways. And that part of the challenge is going to be how are we going to communicate this out to the public and the community so that they can understand as well? So as Dr. Whit- or Superintendent Whitney mentioned, we have been messing around with getting some of your data, creating some sample visualizations. This is one of them relative to third-grade reading, still in draft form. It is your data, looking at breaking it down by race and ethnicity as well as English learner program. Gives you a better indication, and this is be an example of something we could put on the website that you could actually see broken down a little bit more than just that single indicator. It would be something that the board would have for a dashboard. Additionally, we have the data that for more of an internal look, we're looking at all the grade levels. Again, you can see the placement of the individual, and I'm just going to show these as examples. I don't expect you to dig into them. Again, broken down by race and ethnicity, how far above grade level or below grade level on the average for each of the races and ethnicities. And then even in this case, looking at your EL program on what their home language is and how well they're doing. So once we get the data in with Tableau software, there's a lot of potential to manipulate the data in different ways once you get it into the system, which gives us a lot of flexibility. The other thing I want to stress is that academic data isn't the only data that we need to be looking at, and I know you agree with that based on looking at the reports that you've had already. This is out of the OSPI School Improvement Handbook. It's also out of Chuck Salina and Suzanne Gert's work on Powerless to Powerful. And I use this with a lot of districts in our training with looking at perceptual data from the standpoint of pointing out that achievement data is what we focus on the most, and it's often more of a lagging indicator. And all too often, we don't take the time to fully understand the demographics within a school or a school district, to understand the voice of our students, the cultures of our families, the needs of those that we're truly serving. And then to come in, and in that contextual data, are we aligning the systems to really meet the needs of the people that we're serving? And the perceptual data can play that intermediary role to really give you an indication as to whether or not people are happy with the systems that you've created to create that context. And as people become more satisfied with the system and your perceptual data increases, that's often a leading indicator towards future success that's going to come academically because you're making people more welcome, more belonging within the system, you're creating academic programs that students are more engaged in. So that perceptual data can really be a leading indicator. So I want to take just a minute and talk about outrageous outcome five because that's the one that really doesn't lend itself to those academic indicators that gets more into the perceptual data. And a concept that I want to introduce on this is really that of triangulating and not relying on one single data point. And it seems more obvious when we talk about non-academic indicators to do this as opposed to sometimes when we look at our academic indicators. So when we talk about triangulating, we're taking different perspectives and viewpoints and hopefully getting a bigger, full picture of what's happening within the system. So when we look at outrageous outcome number five, we can use self-perception data, our EES survey data. We can use anecdotal data or classroom observation data taken by teachers, and we can also use quantitative data on some of those contextual systems like attendance and behavior. So what we've got built in right now is we administer the EES survey. We've got belonging and identity and future orientation are two of the key components of that outrageous outcome five. We boil that down and, I think I have to click one more time. That's what we would potentially show to the public as trends over time on how well kids feel belonging and identity within the school system as part of that outrageous outcome. Additionally, we've got attendance data and/or discipline data that we could bring in. The attendance data is a, could be seen as being connected to sense of belonging and identity and that future orientation with if they see the value in school, they feel like they belong in school, they're more likely to attend, attendance should be up. The other thing that we could consider doing is because you have electronic report cards, there's nothing preventing you from extracting the teacher-reported data on student sense of belonging and social-emotional growth within the classroom. Teachers are grading this already, have been for years. Why not pull that data and be able to then compare? How do students report themselves? How do teachers report how students are doing? And then are we seeing changes in the context that we're operating in that aligns with the trends that we're seeing from perceptual and observation or anecdotal data? Similar, we can, we can look at some of our academic data as well by triangulating from more than one area. The next area I wanted to get into is what can we control? And so here we're looking at our student growth, and this is off of one of the reports that you had. And I was excited to see that you have the student report or growth in the report, but it's not really highlighted to the degree that I think student growth should be reflected within how Pasco measures your success, because you have some factors within your student population that when you look strictly at benchmark, I don't think that's telling the whole story. I think growth can be a much better indicator in some ways. And I'll use WACIDS data as the starting point for talking about the value of looking at growth as opposed to benchmark. Not all of your kids are coming ready for kindergarten, and you're going to have a report later this evening talking about your preschool programs, and you've got some pretty good preschool programs. But even at that, you take a look, and not all of your kids are even at a three-year-old developmental level when they come into your kindergarten programs. And so when you look at benchmark, is it really reasonable to expect a student who comes into kindergarten below a three-year-old developmental level to be at benchmark in kindergarten by the end of kindergarten? Are you going to put all that on the kindergarten teacher? Or are you going to say, "We want to make sure this student gets to grade level within a reasonable amount of time. We're going to set that goal." And I'm sure your kindergarten teachers are having this discussion, your first-grade teachers are having this discussion. Why not model this within the accountability system and say, "There's a growth component that we need to recognize that we definitely have to have for these kids who come in below three-years-old developmentally, but from an accountability standpoint of the district, the district accountability on benchmark isn't going to kick in until they've been here a certain amount of time." Or with that student who comes in in seventh grade out of another school district that's three grade levels below, you're not looking at that benchmark accountability until you've had time to develop some growth, but you want to make sure you have growth every single year. So when I was in Evergreen, I had this same discussion with my board, and one of the things that we came up with is I said, "You know, I'm confident within our system that if we have a student for five years, we can have them at grade level. I don't care where they, how they come to us. We can get them to grade level within five years." And they said, "Great." And then we talked, had this WACIDS data discussion and said, "At what point do we want to have that threshold that we're going to hold ourselves accountable for having them at grade level at the end of kindergarten based on entrance in WACIDS?" And we started breaking the students down into these groups where we looked at benchmark for some and growth for others. And another one that we had a discussion on is we had DLI programs, and in both Camby and Evergreen, I had pretty extensive DLI programs, not what Pasco has. I'm pretty envious of your DLI programs. But research-wise, your third graders probably aren't going to be at grade level in English development when they're in a DLI program in third grade. So is there a way to look at, are you meeting their needs and are they progressing the way they need to be progressing that's not ignored but identified in a separate way so that we can capture that and make sure that we're honoring the fidelity of the program and getting the expected outcomes that we want from the program, but not just covering everything with one blanketed expectation? It's more of a differentiated approach towards our accountability. And this was just a graphic that I used when I was in Evergreen with the board to talk, give them a visualization of, these are the kids in green that I'm definitely responsible for them being at benchmark. The ones in yellow and blue, we're going to use a combination of benchmark and growth data to be able to monitor. But for sure, we want to make sure every kid is making a year's growth in reading and math in every single year. And we put our tests in just similar, like you have stars, so potentially that could be something that we could discuss is what is that growth expectation for all students in those areas? And I just throw this one up and, because I was curious, when I, when I came to this agreement with the board, I had my data and accountability person, I said, "I want to know, what's our graduation rate for the kids that came to us in eighth grade that have been with us for five years?" And I'm sure you probably have never asked that question, and it took a little data gymnastics for them to generate this for me. But look at my four, this was a few years back before I left Evergreen, but that's our four-year and five-year graduation rates for the students who were with us from eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. And I mean, they're all, you're talking individual kids, one, maybe two kids per subgroup that are bringing those down, which gave us a huge celebration to say, "If you come to us at the beginning of eighth grade, you're going to graduate. We're confident you're going to graduate." And if you don't come to us in eighth grade, we're still going to do everything we can to make sure we get you there as soon as we possibly can and hopefully within four years. But to me, this became a real boost to our high schools who were struggling looking at those 85 and 88 percent graduation rates that were really frustrated with themselves. And to be able to show them this data and say, "You guys are doing a great job. Mobility is what's killing us." But we, but we now have to focus on how do we overcome this mobility because we're not just going to ignore those kids, but it allows us to focus our efforts better on, these are the kids that are really causing us to not, or these are the kids we're really not serving to get them across the graduation stage. And I'm almost done talking, and then I'm going to turn it over to you guys. But I wanted to make sure I set the stage and gave you kind of my perceptions of some things to think about. Finally, will it drive change? Again, going back to the theory of action, and how are we going to change adult behavior? Looking at your data, one of the things that I didn't really see that I know you've had discussions on is this is data from another district using our belonging and identity as well as collaboration and interpersonal skills, is we set long-term goals with them of looking out three, four, or five years on where do we want to see this data trend? And the discussion is we want it to be above the norm of those district averages that we get from CEE on our data. And the other thing is we want to make sure that we don't have any disproportionality between our data within our races and ethnicities. So whatever the top one is, we want everybody else to get to that point, and we want them to get there by the time that we have the end of our horizon. So that's another thing that I would say is to be able to publicly make those statements. You've got your 100% values. I wouldn't touch those at all. I think that's great, but then how do you get from reality to 100%? And often, often that doesn't happen all in one step. The ultimate goal is to make sure we're not trying to put a square peg in a round hole, that it fits for you. I mean, you're the board, you're governing, you want to make sure that the outcomes that you're getting for the kids are reflected in the data that we're presenting. So with that, I looked at the data table. When I went through this, I didn't see anything that jumped out to me as really missing or anything that I would toss out and not keep. To me, it's more of how do you differentiate it and dig in a little bit deeper and articulate, these are the groups of kids that we really want to focus on, and how do we better aggregate and disaggregate the data to be able to reflect that and look at potentially growth as a component that isn't really highlighted that much? So with that, I just had these questions, and that's the end of the PowerPoint, and then it was really up to a discussion with the board on, are there, you know, within what the measurements you have, did you have any that you thought you really want to get rid of? Are there any you wanted to add? Are there any that need to be adjusted? And any reflections you have on what I've shared in the last 25 minutes?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Stich. Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Stich from the board or student board reps?
Thank you, Dr. Stich. I don't know that I, don't know that I have any questions necessarily. I do appreciate the presentation, though, and certainly some things to think about. And when it comes to monitoring our data and how are we doing as a, as a board, I think that's probably one of the challenges is, I'll speak for myself, but I'm guessing I'm not alone, is, is even as a board, we're probably not as engaged in following these results as we should be or could be, and, and maybe that's just because we're not doing it in the most efficient manner for us. So I think anything that you can do to help us there would be, would be wonderful and would be, well, helpful to us.
I think one of the struggles you run into is you want to be able to look at data all the time, but there's certain natural windows when data becomes available, and that's really something that's highlighted to me as we've created these data dashboards for multiple districts now, is when do we actually update? So you'll have start, you know, we, we can pull the demographic data and create a lot of the files early in of the files early in the school year, but we can follow the STAR windows, we're still limited by the state on the release of the graduation requirements. I'll tell you, we have tried to recreate graduation rates from raw student data for other districts. And to get to the point where we truly match the state, we usually end up like one or two kids off, and the last thing the board wants to do is put something on the website that doesn't quite match what the state has. So we've ended up defaulting to just pulling the state, get state graduation rates. There's things we can do internally to the district for the administration to dig at, that I wouldn't put on the website, that we can do a ton of disaggregations and analysis of that graduation data, as an example, that you can look at throughout the year. But there are those natural windows, and I think part of, of setting up your monitoring plan is figuring out, what are those key data elements that you want to monitor? When do they become available? When can the administration have it processed and brought to you? And then setting the schedule up based on those natural data windows.
Thank you. No, I appreciate what you said. Chemical engineer myself, Mr. Christensen, Vice President Christensen, Electrical Engineer, and other board members here think like...
Wait, 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 mechanical.
Mechanical, sorry, mechanical engineer. Think like math, science. And we look at this, and Ms. Phillips here, and Vice President Christensen and myself have been on the board nine years, and we've been kind of churning this as a staff and a board for many years, and we get the data. And I think what we struggle with is exactly what you're saying. We get like one data point here or there, a green line, a yellow line, a red line. And we know as a group here that Pasco is doing great things. And sometimes our yellow line might not show, it looks flatlined, might not show the great things that we're doing. Sometimes our green lines falsely show that we're doing great things, you know, it might be, because, because we're looking at up 2% here on one single data point, down 4% here, up 6% the next year. And so over time, we're looking at it each year, and we see greens and reds and yellows, but we can't digest that and figure out what our long, long-term, if we have a trajectory that's going up there. And I know the district staff's doing a great job with this, too, but I do like, I like what you're saying about kind of triangulating that and getting more data points and celebrating the wins where they are. Because I think if we dig down, we'll see that there's a lot of wins and a lot of great places that maybe we aren't marketing and really looking at and saying, that, that's best practice right there, and, and expanding on that. So I like, I like that. Great stuff.
From your WAC kids data, your mobility data, and your graduation data, there's great stuff happening in the district.
Yep.
Because you're getting kids across the graduation stage as well as anybody in the state, and the students are coming to you not quite as well-prepared as many districts. And you're getting a lot of that rotation, and mobility is one of the hardest things on kids.
Yeah.
Getting them into the system and getting them acclimated and getting them up to speed as quickly as possible is, is critical.
Yeah.
If you can have your monitoring system highlighting, these are the kids that came to us, and here's how we did with those kids this year. I think there's a huge celebration probably to be had in that.
Yeah.
I like your slides, though. I like your slides on the data, and I, I really like it disaggregated, because you cannot compare school districts straight across. It, it just doesn't make sense. By disaggregating the data, it helps. And looking at the school districts that are more similar in demographics to our own also helps. But, but I also think focusing on the growth data is huge. And so highlighting that and helping, you know, to me, that makes a lot of sense. I don't know, to the regular parent that's going to be looking at what data is, what Pasco's doing, it would be nice if that was pretty clear, too. But, but the data that you showed me seemed pretty, pretty simple, straightforward. I appreciated the layout of that.
One of the things I have that I inherited with CE is I've got a Tableau guy that just loves building in Tableau, and he's not an educator by background, so he's a stor, he's a storyteller. And we give him the data, and we give him a lot of flexibility to say, tell us a story. So he digs into it and tries to put it in terms that your, the public's going to understand, hopefully. And that's where, and we do iterations with this. We'll put it together, and you can see, we use your color palette, your fonts. We want it to look like part of your website. And once we get it built, modifying it is really simple. It's, it's getting the original data in there, getting the original things built. But then the what-ifs of, what if we disaggregate by something else? As long as it's in that student demographic, we can pull that together real, very quickly.
Some, something, and I don't want to dive down too much into the benchmarks there, because your group along with district staff, I think, are more qualified to, to tell us what the, the benchmark should be. But one I was thinking could be added, and I've said this a few times recently, is on our career in college readiness, we track, you know, did we get college credits here? How many kids got college credits and all that? But I think diving down more to the level of, when we talk to students sometimes or parents, they get far along in their, in their high school career, and they haven't had those conversations with district staff about what's available early enough. So those that are getting college credits, not all the time, but are often driven by their parents or being through the system with a, with a sibling or something like that. But first-time students into the high school level, let's say, don't know all the opportunities that are there. So I think there's some kind of benchmark about some kind of contacts, whether it's with the counselor, whether it's with some other specialists. But having those discussions and contacts with the family early on in the high school and in the middle school career, I think there's some kind of benchmark to be, to be tracked and, and us to focus on there.
One of the things I'd be curious, and I'm pretty sure you've got pretty close to 100%, but how many of your, typically by the end of seventh or definitely by the end of eighth grade, how, how many have a high school and beyond plan? And then how many high school and beyond plans are modified during the high school years?
I don't, I, some of the kids I've talked to say that happens later on in their career versus down at the seventh, eighth, ninth grade level, so.
Yeah. Another thing that I've looked at with other districts is the National Clearing House, which gives you information on your college-going students. But the problem is, it's so far removed, they typically are two to three years behind on their data. So I developed with a couple of districts I'm working with, just a quick five-question exit survey for seniors. I mean, do you feel ready to go to your next step? Did the school help support you? And some of those questions about, do you really feel ready? And what, you know, what are your plans for the next year? And it's five questions, takes them less than a minute, you can give it to your seniors the last week of school, tell them, you know, before you pick up your down, answer it. And it gives you some pretty solid feedback on what they're planning to do.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
No, I, I really like it. I, I like the data. I like what it shows. Would this be for parents as well on our website?
Well, potentially, the five outrageous outcomes, that's what we're trying to come up with, a pretty simple dashboard that gives some indication on each of those five indic, or key indicators for the five outrageous outcomes. But to me, it's taking that step back first and saying, for third-grade reading, is it just going to be STAR? Or is it going to be STAR and teacher-based classroom assessments? Because, you know, one of the other things, I use, I have a mosaic slide I throw up that I often say, the ultimate goal isn't to create more work for the classroom teacher. The ultimate goal is to take the data that the classroom teacher finds beneficial in assessment of and for learning, and aggregate that to the district level. And use that data to tell the story. So ideally, we will have something for each of those five outrageous outcomes that gives an indication to the public that they can see on the website as to how the district is doing this year as well as some past years. So it gives you a little bit of historical trend, as well as what the goals are moving forward.
So to give you some context, that, that question came from one of our board members, Director Jesse Campos, who's not here, but with us remotely.
I didn't think I was hearing things. So is that information, so if we identified other metrics of measuring success towards our outrageous outcomes, would those also be displayed to the public? Or do we, is that normally what?
It's kind of up to you how much you want to display to the public and how much you want to just monitor internally. Because, you know, you can look, a couple of districts we work with, Yakima and Reynolds have theirs up on their website, Centrolias is almost up on their website, Cashmere's will be up pretty soon. But they have like, the full dashboard, the administration looks at, the board looks at this much, and then this much we actually extract and put in, embed within the website.
So how much, so other districts, how, based on like, numbers data versus, you know, your perceptual data or your demographics and stuff, how much, other, so we have our outrageous outcomes, of course, and I don't know how other districts do it, what they've chosen, but how, what's the, I guess, what's the ratio, percentage of more perceptual data to numbers quantifiable?
It really, depends on what their strategic plan is focusing on. I could see yours is going to be pretty heavy on academic data. Your, your five, your first four are going to be pretty heavy on academic data. The last one's going to be heavy on perceptual data. I had something else great I was going to say a second ago, now it just slipped my mind.
So are we on the plan to put some kind of a dashboard then up on, I mean, right now we do have something, it seems, unless I'm wrong, I could be wrong, but it's fairly simple, it's something that I think we pull off right off of, yeah, I don't know, but you know, really short thing on demographics, where we are with our English, where we are, that all comes from, from ESBA, I believe. Are, are we going to be able to put some of these growth numbers up and, and paint a picture that more represents what's really happening here?
Yeah. If, if you look at Reynolds School District out of Portland, their website has their strategic plan, and they've created a whole storyboard for it. And then we plugged our data into the storyboard. So I could see something like with third-grade reading, you know, the first question is, how many students met benchmark in third grade? And you've got that indicator of what percentage that is. Your outrageous outcome is 100%. Now, of those that didn't meet benchmark, how long have they been in the system? And then of those, how much growth did they experience in the last year in reading?
Yeah.
So that starts to tell you more of the story that you can share with the public, that, yeah, we're not at 100%, but it's because we had a bunch of second graders that came in that were a grade level behind, that made 1.5 grade levels growth this year. We're only a half grade level behind now.
Well, high poverty, ELA, and English, our English language learners, those are also huge indicators of whether or not.
Yep.
And you're right, the dual language, the kids start out behind and end up ahead. So, so that is also important information. I'm not sure how to put all that on. I have another question, too. So we have our superintendent goals, our district annual objectives, they are a little bit, well, they are different than our strategic plan. And our strategic plan really focuses around the outrageous outcomes. I feel like our district annual objectives do as well. But that's something that obviously is more internal, not so external. But it's also really hard for us sometimes to figure out where we should focus on data and where we should focus more on processes. So how do we go about that?
Yeah. John doesn't have any context for what the district annual objectives are, what they're connected to. So I think it's an unfair question to ask of John at this point. I think I could work with John and give him some more context, and this probably is not the first time John's going to be here with us. So I could give him, like, he doesn't know what those are.
Okay.
So I don't want you to, yeah, well, but I could, I could provide him that context any, and ask him for a recommendation of how we might connect or streamline all of those pieces.
That would be great.
Yeah, he just would need a lot of context to understand that.
Because this whole picture, yeah, this whole picture is what we struggle with. And that balance between processes, processes, and, and data is sometimes a difficult one.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a good question, Amy. I think one we can work on together.
So as we, as we go through this journey and, and work on our, our benchmarks and what we're looking at, they're going to be tied, obviously, to our outrageous outcomes. When the public, the public will look at our outrageous outcomes, too, but, you know, there's these single-point data points like OSPI, kids' performance in, in ELA and in math, or, you know, what, what's commonly looked at. And if we were low there, and kind of consistently below where we might want to be there, also saying, that's not what we should be focusing on, we're not teaching to test, we're not only focusing on that. But should those numbers naturally go up if we focus on the right things in setting the right benchmarks and, and communicating that out through the district and working on it? Will we just naturally see those go up if we do it right?
There's so much complexity to that, you know, like you said, it's, you know, I, I personally like looking at, how did my, a continuous cohort going from third to fourth to fifth to sixth, how did those students progress over time?
Yeah.
And I would say with those students, yes. But to say, next year's third graders are going to outdo this year's third graders, there's way too many variables and...
Right. It's what you can't control yourself.
Yeah, that's one of the problems you run into. What can you control with? You know, the kids are different. They come, you know, you have a different set of kids every year.
But if we have that data that shows ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade, and we looked at ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade over time, those reading on grade level, those meeting math standards at grade level should naturally increase if they're in the district for five years, like you said, something, a target like that.
Should, yeah.
All right.
I think, so our goal as a board is we want to know how our district is doing, and we want some accountability there. We want to make sure things are going in the right direction, and to be able to make some changes when we don't. I think you, you use the example of, so you've got your district, they're using this much data, viewing that much, the board's viewing this much, and this is what we're going to put out to the public. And not that we're trying to keep them from anything, but we, we want to put it out in a form that they have context. All of this data, I mean, I, I'm sure that our, our administrative team, our teaching team is tracking all of this. I mean, they know what our high-level objectives are, and they're, I mean, those are, those are our goals. Everything we do should be, should align to those goals. I think the question is, are we asking the right questions? Are we using the right data for an accountability standpoint and to keep us informed as a board? That data's there, hopefully. If it's not, we've, we've probably got other problems that we're not...
And I'd loop back, I think you have the right data. I, I just don't think that you're differentiating the way you're looking or triangulating in a way that tells the whole story.
And I, I would agree. I think the, yeah, I mean, just saying, okay, so, I mean, what are we at? The 20, I mean, we've got what, 20% of our kids reading on grade level? Is that, I mean, at third grade? Third grade reading on grade level, our goal is 100%? We're at, we're at, it's low. It's less than 50. I don't know what the right number is.
So I think to John's point, right now, we look at a singular data point to identify that. Well, if we triangulated and say that you could be in the bucket of being defined as reading on grade level by an SBA score that's meeting standard, or you're meeting standard on the content-based assessments that determine whether you're on standard, or by an indicator on a report card. I think that's a fair assessment of how many students are on grade level. And it controls for things like, we just talked about, our dual-language students in third grade, by program definition, are not going to read on grade level in third grade in English. We look at STAR in Spanish. But I think there could be some value in the triangulation that John talked about, and I think it would be an interesting thing to apply.
That, that's, that's where I'm going. I think we've got to look at our data in a way that doesn't just show that, gosh, 26 out of 100, I mean, I just use that number, runs in my mind, it's in the twenties, but that, that looks bad. Well, we're not that bad. I, I'm sure there are some wins in there. We're just not looking at the data in a way that, that helps us, and not, not, we're not just trying to find the places where we're doing good and hold those up. We want to find out where we've got problems so that we can address them as well. And I'm guessing that that information is had among those who are working with it every day, just getting it in the format and at the level where we as a board can use that is the challenge. And hopefully, that's what you're going to help us do.
We're just seeing cohorts, like, if we're looking at it at third grade, and 17% or 20% are meeting standard, just over time in these different cohorts, hopefully, our average was down at 5% in kinder, not hopefully. But if we're only at 20% over time, if we're going to say we're improving from K through three, we shouldn't have them come, 25% coming in reading at grade level, and by grade three, 20%, where there's things for us to look at, right? And I don't know that I could even answer that question right now, but as we, as we go and dig into the cohorts and stuff, we'll, we'll see that.
It would be interesting to me to know, of the third graders who came into kindergarten who have been here K1, 2, 3, that came in above four-year-old developmental level, what is your reading at grade level? That'd be, I'd be interested in knowing that.
Yeah.
And if that's 25 or 30%, that's a whole different story.
It's good to know.
Yeah.
But it's, not good, but good to know.
Good to know.
Yeah. And I think those are, I think, you know, this has been helpful in helping, I'll just speak for myself again, I think I've been struggling just, okay, we see the data, but we need some context, and need to know if it's the right data that's, that's helpful to us. I mean, hopefully, it... I mean, hopefully it is to the, to the teams that are using it. But, but as a board, it, it really hasn't been that helpful to me, other than to say, okay, well, that's where we are. So. And I think on all of those, I mean, like you mentioned, there's different things. Each of our, each of our five outrageous outcomes are different ways that we can look at that data. I think we have people that are working hard and doing good work. There's got to be good things happening. But just looking at the data, I think how we've been looking at it, it can be a little discouraging and, and not that informative.
And you're not alone in struggling with that. So just as I mentioned, I was speaking at a, the Wisdom Sharing Conference for coherent governance at the beginning of this month or end of last month. And it was on this exact topic because boards from across the country were coming together saying, we've got this policy method down, but we don't have, we're not excited about the measurements that we're using. How do we get better at measurements? And some of them hadn't made the steps that you had. They were still looking at process. And they felt really, they'd feel good and have celebrations that they did all these things, but they weren't really monitoring whether kids were, kid, student learning was improving.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board for Dr. Stich or from Ms. Whitney, Superintendent Whitney?
Well, I, are you done? I guess, where do we go from here?
Yeah. So I, so, and certainly, you know, this is for feedback from the board, but as I was sitting here listening to John, I think he's gotten a lot of context directly from you about what you'd like to see. He certainly has seen all of our work. He has all of our policies, all of the presentations we've done up to this point. We had a really, a great session with John earlier this morning with cabinet staff in preparation for you being here tonight. So I think there was a lot of really great ideas surfaced during that meeting that we got excited about. So I, I'm kind of envisioning that we would take all of that information back and that we could, staff and I could work with John, we could create some visualizations that encompass all of the feedback that you heard, what staff was excited about, and almost do like a poster session with the board where we had the visualizations here and the board could say, this is what I'm talking about. This is not what I'm talking about. And then formalize, I mean, it's almost like working backwards into the policy. You're almost kind of formalizing the data visualizations and then we can build the policy from that. It might be a nice concrete way to make what we just talked about in theory like practical. So based on what you said as a board, here's what you would see as the way that district staff will present and talk to you about third grade reading data. That's triangulated, that takes into consideration factors of differentiated expectation, et cetera, so that you could see what is that going to look like when we get that in the report? So that you don't get the report and go, yeah, this doesn't, this isn't what I wanted to see.
Will the board have the ability to decide if, like, if we look at that data and we say, well, that's not exactly the benchmark we want to be measuring, we'll be able to have input in that?
Absolutely. And I think doing it with a visual representation will ensure we're all talking about the same thing. So that's, that's one thought about a path forward to make what I feel like sometimes is kind of a philosophical nebulous conversation more concrete and practical in terms of this is what you can expect to see. And then once we're clear about that as a board and superintendent, it can do two things. It can kind of go like this. It goes into your policy, but then it can help us inform what goes on our website for public consumption. But then it also will help inform district staff in terms of what visualizations do we give to district staff and principals and then to teachers. So it would really be informing kind of triangulated aspects of the organization.
Because ideally, it should be a through line from the boardroom to the classroom, I guess. Which is why I said, as much as we can use data that's valuable to teachers at the classroom level and aggregate it up to the district, like pulling things out of report cards, it, it adds value to that.
Yeah.
Does that sound like a reasonable path forward?
It, it sounds fine to me. I, I think, again, going back to that point, we, I mean, hopefully the data's there and being collected and being used. It's just, yeah, we, we don't want to make work for, for our teachers.
My experience is within the district, you have all these disparate data systems and you don't have one that pulls everything into one place. And that's why we started doing these dashboards with Yakima, because I just, they had a brand-new strategic plan. We're trying to figure out how to monitor it. And I said, I got this great Tableau guy. Let us play with this for you and see what we can do. And now we've got a partnership with schooldata.net where we could potentially just pull data directly from them. Or we pull it from, have the district give us data exports. And once we get to, for those of you who would care, we get a master demographic file that gives us a student ID in every demographic we'd ever want to mess with. Then any other files, all we need is the same student ID and whatever data we're going to visualize and we plug those together within Tableau. And then it's a matter of just drag and drop different aspects on the visualization. So modifying them once we create it is really simple.
No, that, that path forward sounds good to me. I know we've been, and I appreciate everything the district's done and we, we tell you guys, bring us a rock, you know? And we've been doing that for a lot of years and, and a lot of that's on us when we, we get the rock. But I like that working session type thing, because we've had data dashboards in the past that may be used by staff, maybe not used as much by the board or parents or at all. But it's a journey and none of what we've done in the past has been a waste of anybody's time. It's, it's helping us all learn to, to get to that final endpoint. So much appreciation to all who've put efforts in to our data dashboard, to this growth progress monitoring over the years and look to continue to improve, so.
What kind of a rough frame, time, framework do we have, you know, getting this into policy and then maybe eventually getting some of this information on our websites?
Um, I think it, us getting the data from the district, if we can get it in the next couple of weeks, we can play with stuff. We need a couple of weeks to play with it and put some things together. But I think we need some discussions as to, before we get to that point on how we're going to do this. So I'll let Michelle give you an idea of timeline.
I don't, I don't miss specifics.
Yeah. I just think we need to get together within the next couple of weeks and kind of, you know, digest what we just heard. And I actually don't think, once we have a clear direction, you call him the Tableau guy, but he does have a name.
Brian.
Brian. Like Brian is really impressive about, like, I was sitting with him and he was visualizing some graduation data and I was like, well, I want it like this and like that. And like, he was like, okay, and then it's done. So I think once we're clear about what we want him to do, him doing the visualization is not going to take long.
It's probably, I, I would think a fair target for us would be like the first, after the new year, the first board meeting after the new year with the holidays coming up. We got WASDA.
Really that.
We got fewer, I mean, that's-
I was thinking next year, so that's great.
Two and a half months or something.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
So?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Brian's not taking a three-week vacation this fall, so we're in good shape.
And then we, and then are we going to, can we bring him back out then? Like when we do some of our district annual objectives in, in June? And, or are you going to do that on your own? Because I still want to figure that part out.
Well, yeah, let me talk to John about it.
Okay. I think that would be really powerful and help us to better do our job. I think the most important thing that we do is, well, hire the superintendent and, and then, and then monitor the performance, which we do largely through the district annual objectives and the superintendent evaluation. That was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stich. We look forward to continuing to take this journey and hearing from you in a couple of months.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.